Thank you very much. I want to greet everyone in name of peace, which is a universal greeting of all the problems, from Adam to Mohammed. Moses, who brought laws, he said peace. Joseph, who received, well, not David, who received the songs, he said peace. Jesus, the Christ, the one they wrote the gospel about, he said peace. And Mohammed, he said peace. And now we're all looking for universal peace that the world can seem to give. My focal point today would be speaking about the Sars 2. Because as Brother Patrick said and Brother Higino said so eloquently, if we go to the ICJ, it will take at least maybe perhaps five to 10 years. In the interim, Guatemalan will be consolidating itself on the Sars 2 area. We use the term disputed areas. We use the term, we use the term, it's a disputed area. That was the reason why, that was one of the rationale that the government of Belize used when they passed the southernary instrument that banned us from going to the Sars 2, it was a disputed area. But if you follow the rationale, PG is a disputed area, Bemopay is a disputed area. If that's the case then, why is it that, what is so special about the Sars 2? Why we can't go there? The reason why the Sars 2 is important and the central of this issue is because it's part of the Guatemalan legal and military strategy to take to the ICJ. The Sars 2 area, if you've never been down there, it's a river that's part of Ferro, Ferro Mosmontri, the southern deep south. It is, you know, right? The river itself and across is a village called Sars 2 village. Where I've been to that village, had dinner with the people, talked to them, took photos with them. So the people have no problem with us. It's the military oligarchy in Guatemalan that has issue with us. And coming back to my point about the Sars 2. So Brother Patrick and Brother Higino were saying, we have, okay, in 1981, we receive our independence with all the territories intact. Sovereignty, no question of any border dispute, well, dispute of, but no question of what those international borders were, except for Guatemalan's deference. But yet and still, we have done everything in our power to unravel that reality. Think about that for a second. We have tried to do everything in our power to unravel that reality that we have international recognized borders from Aquesta Baez to Gobert, that's up north, to Gobert Falls, out west, to Grasas Adios, deep south. And I've been to all of these markers, so I know what I'm telling you. There's boundary markers, there's cement markers that you can physically touch. I went to paint one of them at Gobert Falls recently with Brother Patrick and some other Belizeans who as part of the BTV, Belize territorial volunteers. We have done everything in our power to unravel it, how? I'm not gonna get into the historical aspect of it because my focus is on the Sars 2 and what's happening today. Let's start with the head of the report. The Webster proposal is the blueprint, if you will, for what? The powers that be have in mind for Belize. And why I use it as a focal point was because if you look at the history of the mosquito coast in Nicaragua, where the British have protectorate there on the Pacific. And they gave it back to Nicaragua as a gesture, says, "We don't want to be bothered with the wrangling. You can have back the mosquito coast." We've met some of those people, like Ray Hooper and others. We had alliance with some of the people on the mosquito coast. So the British gave back the mosquito coast to Nicaragua. And that's now, even though they have quote-unquote the autonomy, they're still a department of Nicaragua. They control their military and their foreign affairs. They may have local government. So basically what the Webster proposal was doing was exchanging motive of uptake. As I said, the British, we captured number in 1964. So under the Webster proposal, using the Nicaragua mosquito coast as a blueprint, they would have given back Belize to Guatem- they would have given, not given back, let me, let me not use that correctly. They would have given the leaves to Guatemala, exchanging British for the Guatemalans. They would have controlled our military and our foreign affairs. But they still have local government or self-tollment as we had in 1964. So after the Webster proposal, then we came to the head of agreement. Needless to say, I wasn't wrong for the Webster proposal, but I was wrong for the head of agreement. Needless to say, the Belizeans were very violent against it and they rejected this proposal because they were too, were compromising to Belize. Then we come to 1993. The Martin Air Act, I'm giving you a chronology of how we tried to unravel our territorial, hard-fought territorial integrity that we wanted in 1981 in the United Nations. Come back to Martin Air's Act, which essentially said, "We will delimit our territorial seas down south." We will not, in deference, again, in deference to Guatemala, we will delimit our territorial seas to three miles. While under, on us, we did the United Nations charter of the law of the seas, every nation have the God given right to claim 12 miles from their coast and out and then you even have 200 mile exclusive economic zone. But we decided, down in the Sars 2 area where the mother river is, we decided to delimit our territorial seas to three miles. And if you go down there, I'm telling you, you can see why Guatemalans want it. So we delimited, we made it law under the Martin Air's Act. We made it a law that they cannot, that Belize will delimit out of deference. We're not gonna claim more, okay, fine. Then we, let's move on. 2000, we started what is called a facilitation process, which try to negotiate with the Guatemalans. I use the word negotiate because, think about that word negotiate with the Guatemalans. It's kind of like, almost like an anomaly because Guatemalans are serial breakers of every single document, every single proposal that we have signed with them, period. Irrefutable, they do not respect any document or any agreements that they've signed with Belize. So we started facilitation process. Alright, fine, we went up to what is called a CDM. Let's do confidence building measures, this was in 2005. Asa Chuman, professor, or not professor, but Dr. Asa Chuman was the signatory negotiator in that agreement. I have a lot of respect for the brother, but whenever I see him, I was telling him, "God, I don't agree with what you did." He, he agreed to what is called an adjacent zone. Now let me explain that, what do I mean by that? This adjacent zone goes from up north, Aquesta Baez, to Gobert Falls, out west by Panket, Valle, Guatemalano border, to Grasas Adios, down south. We're talking about one kilometer on both sides. I'm standing here, so one kilometer on both sides, 100 miles long, about the size of Cayman, in deference to Guatemalan again. There we go, you see the rattling going. So let's move on. So we fought, we signed this agreement, which bring us to the famous compromise that Brother Higino was talking about, Professor Higino talked about. Under this compromise, we said that, no, we already, before I get to that, let me just, I don't wanna rush to get to that, but let me go back to the confidence building measures. What we essentially did again, under those confidence building measures, is that we blurred the lines of our international borders in the island of Guatemalan. Because the document itself, if you look at it, one of the articles, I think it's article seven, I'm not sure, but it tells you that this doesn't mean that you're giving up your borders as far as the Guatemalans are concerned. They see that as an acknowledgement that you were accepting, legitimizing their claim. If you decide that you're gonna, you know, make your international borders an adjacent line. Hence the famous artificial borders from the Foreign Minister. I don't know if you guys heard that, he referred to, which is not a, which quote-unquote is not a wrong term, but if you look at the connotation of what that, of what that means, the deeper metaphor to that, then you can understand why a lot of Belizeans are upset with that terminology of artificial borders. In any event, so nobody can come to the compromise in 2008, to be exact. This was, when we signed this compromise and says, "We're gonna take this case to the International Court of Justice." Contingent upon a simultaneous referendum in both countries. Okay, fine, one was scheduled for October 6, 2013. A simultaneous referendum in both countries. It was all geared up, you know, the MFA, Minister of Foreign Affairs, would do the education campaign. And it was all, we were all set to go to the referendum in October 6, 2013. What happened? Remember I told you that Guatemalans are serial breaker of agreements? Well, their current president at the time, Otto Perez Moluna, who is complicit in war crime, decided that, "I don't like your referendum law that said you must have two-thirds majority. You need to change your beliefs because it's unfair to us. You have a two-thirds majority referendum law." I said, "No, no referendum would be legitimate unless you got two-thirds of the electorate." So they decided unilaterally pull out of the referendum. So it's like going to, how would I describe it? It's like going to the altar to get married and you're waiting for your wife. No wife, no husband, so to speak, you know. So Belize was all, get dressed up with nothing, get all dressed up, with nothing to show for it because Guatemala decided to pull out of the agreement, the compromise that they signed in 2008, that said that you will have a simultaneous referendum in October 6, 2013. That's just one example of how you cannot trust, I don't trust them, the Guatemalan military oligarchy in Guatemala City. Okay, fine, so we, like I said, we have done all these things to unravel our, our international borders with these agreements that we so willingly signed with the Guatemalans, all in deference to them, but in interest of peace. This peace that I mentioned, that the world can seem to give, that we believe that we have a peace partner in Guatemala. Again, in my opinion, I think we don't. But they say one thing, when they're in the room with you, they say one thing, the rhetoric outside is entirely different. So it's kind of like when you said dos caras, they have two faces. They tell you one thing here, but over here, stop in your back, basically, that's what the Guatemalans. That's how I can describe negotiating with Guatemala has been at this point. Now, again, let me get back to the Sars 2. As part of their military and legal strategy, Guatemala is using a doctrine called effective control. Now what do I mean by that? The United, the International Court of Justice has had several instances where effective control was used as a prerequisite to grant those parties that can show they have effective control of a particular territory. Two cases come to mind, Nanibia versus Bosuana and Nicaragua and Colombia. How does this work? What they do is, see, under effective control is that you cannot use deadly force. So when we went to the Sars 2 with Brother Patrick, we were blockaded by, there was a huge Guatemalan gunboat out there and a lot of fast boats with their, with armed Guatemalan personnel, you know, with M16s. And they were just zipping around and so every time we tried to go somewhere, every time we tried to maneuver a boat, they were just blocking. In some instances, they were routing our boats, but the blockade was on. But we, you know, I mean, it was a lot of Belizean, you can imagine when Belizean get ex, well, you know, I mean, it was crazy out there, but we did not back down. And one boat got through, that was by, in Orlando de la Fuente, his boat got through the blockade. And so he went around the Sars 2 island with Guatemalan military expert. I mean, escort, they were, you know, around, escorting them, sorry, escorting them around the island, as it were. So, but you would have thought that maybe they would have opened fire or they would have shoot one of us or, but it's a very delicate line. Because under effective control, you cannot use deadly force if you say something belongs to you. If you're saying, "This is yours, this is my house." I don't need to use deadly force to take you out. I don't need to aggressively, physically to take you out. And so that's the doctrine that, when you look at the case of Bosuana and Nanibia and also Colombia and Nicaragua, under effective control, the Guatemalans takes this to the ICJ and they use what is called customer law. If you're familiar with customer law, customer law is like, okay, if something is part of your custom, you need it to survive, you need it to, 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 you're dead alive with it. You know, the core thing to look at is, okay, yeah, well, yeah, I'll give it to them because after all, you know, it's customer for them to have it. So Guatemala is playing this very, very, very clever game and we are becoming willing accomplices to that game of effective control. Give you a case in point. Now, if this is your house or your backyard, do you need to buy your leaves to go to your backyard? No, you just step out, step out there and you do whatever you want. But here's what we do. The last time, I think a delegation under the People's United Party went to, to the Sars 2, they sent a letter. My mood of that. They sent a letter begging, "Why, please make a common air back here," I remember, I mean, that kind of thing. It's all fine, but the point I'm making is that plays into the, into the effective control that the Guatemalans wants to show that they have. Because if you have to need a buyer leave to go there, to go down there, that tells you that you don't have control, you don't own it. So for you to come and insult my intelligence and tell me, "Don't worry about it." Use, you know, all these fancy terms, you know, you know, try not to perjure yourself as a lawyer, when I know the reality on the ground is entirely different from what you're saying, that to me doesn't make any sense. Okay, so this is where we are now. If we go to the ICJ, there's probably a mathematical certainty that we probably gonna lose territory, given the current position of reality on the ground as we speak. If I've been there, the Guatemalans come and go at will. No one stops them. Oh, there's 100 feet illegal fishing nets. They have a little lady, we met, she says, "Oh, they don't stop her because she give the four of her enemies, people fry fish." So I mean, you know, I'm just saying, this is the kind of craziness that's going on down there. And until you see for yourself, you'll not believe it. So this is the game, the very clever game that Guatemala is doing and we are going, hopefully, it seems a long way, to go to the ICJ, where I believe that we will in fact probably lose territory. To me, it's a, it's a case of how to lose an ironclad case, basically. Because if you say you have an ironclad case, then why is it that you, that you would not work, that the fact that Guatemala has in fact annexed and occupied the Sars 2? And I deliberately say that because that's what's going on. It's been annexed and occupied. Here's the thing, but under international law, you cannot annex by using deadly force. So hence, when me and Brother Patrick and all of us went down there in that contingent, they couldn't use deadly force because, again, it's a very critical thing because they try to prepare themselves for the court, for the ICJ, the Hague. But I can assure you that Sars 2 is annexed and occupied. I've been there several times and it's occupied and annexed. So I don't care, anybody who comes and tells you otherwise, they should not be believed because they're, they're, they're taking you for fool, insulting your intelligence. Now, as to what does Guatemala claim? And the issue that Clavenda and Lucie said, I think it was Dr. Devarad, just said that, they claim from, although in theory, yes, they claim the whole country for the sake of principle, but officially, what they want is from the Sibun River to the Sars 2. Anybody here from Namibia or here, or from Sibun? They call for Sibun, you know, we Guatemalans, I mean, under the, I mean. So I mean, that's, they basically claim from, if you look at the map, that's about 22,923 square miles of territory, including the beautiful Keys out, out in that area, back there, like the Saba Dilla Keys and those other Keys out there. So it's not just, it's not just something that you should. I'm trying to make it colloquial, but it's a very serious thing that we're dealing with here, okay? So that's what they claim officially, with the issue that they, they Clavenda, that that's what they want to claim from the Sibun River, from the banks of the Sibun River, all the way and everything going back that way. So if you call from that part of the line, remember that, "I will need a passport to go visit you if they get their way." And that's, and that's, and that's the reality of it. "I will need a passport to visit you if they get their way." Now, so I've mentioned that we try, that we are doing everything to unravel the reality of our international borders. And I've showed you why, what we have done, all in interest of deference. And in some instances, appeasing the Guatemalans, who seem to have no interest in ever respecting anything coming out of Belize's side of the negotiations. You know, I mean, I'm not, I try not to get into any kind of alarmist or, or, you know, or conspiracy theory about anything, but it is what it is. Belize is being led to the ICJ and use the word led, or in some instances frightened to go to the ICJ by some very powerful forces, that's probably working behind the scenes. Because if you look at the, okay, the French, they have, they have some, they have some people called the Friends of Belize. These are countries, friendly countries, who are acting in interest of peace. I think United States, England, Turkey is one of them. Several others come to mind, Switzerland, they're all, they are all decided to put together what is called a peace fund, to, to, in the interest of promoting the peace for, for between Guatemala and Belize. So far, they have, Guatemala has received up to $40 million, Belize up to $8 million. All for, you know, to, that, this is supposed to go towards the education campaign, for the referendum, those kind of thing. For example, like in Belize, $8,000 a month office space, I think $120,000 for travel, $700,000 towards education campaign, which should include the diaspora, but no, I haven't seen any of them come yet. I'm not gonna say anything, perhaps they will come later, from, I mean, from the MFA, Minister of Foreign Affairs. And here's the thing with them, when they come, see, this is where it gets very, this is where you play with words because when they come, they're not going to give you the pros and the cons of going to the ICJ. They're just gonna give you what they believe, you should go to the ICJ because everything else is, ICJ are a boss, basically. So which, they, they, the actual document that they signed says that you're supposed to educate the people on the pros and the cons and let them decide. But you don't frighten them into believing that, "Oh, if I vote no, A is gonna happen or B is gonna happen." You give them the situation and then they decide how they want to go to the ICJ. But the ICJ people, I call on the ICJ people and they get upset because they don't want to be referred to as that. But the proponents, the proponents, and let me use a diplomatically correct word, the proponents of the ICJ, well, if they ever come speak to you, they will tell you, "Ironclad case and, and it's the only way, it's the only legal solution." But guess what, most of them are lawyers, the ones that I've met who are, who's, who presents. And so the point is, they don't try to give you an education so that you can make an informed decision. To me, they try to give you an education so you can make a misinformed decision because you don't get all the good things of what the ICJ is all about without looking at the other side of, "This could happen, that could happen." And it's a hyperbole, that also could happen, and that, these are, these are facts. Because all these things, we have no guarantee. No one can guarantee us that if we take this case to the ICJ that we will, Guatemalans walk away in the hand and say, "Thank you very much, nice, don't you, Belize? We will respect everything that the ICJ says." We have no guarantee about that. In fact, I mean, the ICJ has the mechanism to enforce any agreement that, any binding agreement that we, that, that the countries make. Because when you go to the ICJ, see, Belize and Guatemala is going to ICJ under a special agreement. You petitioning, you know, the UN Security Council, and it's, okay, fine, take it to the ICJ under the auspices of the OAS. Fine, they're going under a special agreement, but there's no, there's no, the ICJ don't have an enforcement mechanism where they say that you don't respect this binding agreement, binding minimum, whatever judgment comes out of that arbitration, you have, it's not an equity court. It's not about, "Oh, because I'm a greedy citizen or I'm a greedy," no, it's not an equity court. It's a binding arbitration, which is totally different from an equity court. So whatever, whatever the ICJ says is law, that's it. You have to respect it. You got appeal takes, X amount of years, I think up to nine years in some instances, but you have to go with what the court says. But you can't, the court doesn't have an army, the court doesn't have any kind of enforcement mechanism. So if I don't want to respect it, even though I agree to respect it, and knowing Guatemalan, giving the history of breaking agreements in Belize, I can guarantee it, they're not gonna respect it if the ruling is adverse to what they believe it should be. That's what you gotta bear in mind. You're dealing with a serial breaker of every single agreement, okay? You're not dealing with a, with a, with a partner that respect your rights, or respect your position. You're dealing with a, with a military oligarchy that's greedy, that is racist against their own indigenous majority. What makes you think they're gonna give Guatemalans any slack? If they can't stand their own indigenous majority, they can't stand the Mayas and indigenous, who are the majority in that country? The genocide, many of them are being tried now for crimes against humanity. What makes you think that little old Belize from the Sibun River down on down, you'll respect the rights of people? So you have to understand who your peace partner is. And I'm not saying, I'm not here trying to paint a picture of Guatemala, but you need to know who your enemy is because they're not your friend. They're not your friend. I'm not saying that the Campesino lady with the Sibun River, I mean, in, in Sars 2, out there where she said she'd give the four of her enemies, people fry fish, is your enemy. I'm not arguing that. I'm simply saying that the powers that be in Guatemala City are not to be trusted. I don't trust them, I will never trust them because I see they have a history of trying to compromise Belize, they have a history of disregarding any kind of agreements that they make with, with Belize. Which takes me to, back to the principle of, of effective control. Now, you have a, what is called, I think, kind of, Brother Patrick mentioned it, but I'm gonna get a little deeper about it. He mentioned it, he touched it, but I'm gonna get into it a little bit more. Okay, so if you go to the, if you, let's say, if you, these two parties are, you know, we're in disagreement. So I can, in an hour, in an hour, like go to the UN Security Council. That's what Nicaragua and them did, Colombia. Yeah, I don't need Guatemala to go to UN Security Council because I'm a member, I'm a member of the General Assembly. I don't need to have a buyer leave from the Guatemalans. I can go right to the Security Council, look with the Security Council, which have England, China, United States, Russia. I'm sure those countries would want to hear, you know, what Belize has to say. In any way, you could go to the UN Security Council and seek what is called an advisory opinion. What do I mean by that? Meaning that although it's not a binding resolution, it's respected. It's not binding, that means you don't have to, what is a respected opinion? Because the language that we have going forward to the ICJ is so broad, it opens up Belize to one-term speculation by international body. Because we're not, under the advisory opinion, what we could do is step, ask the UN Security Council to take us to the ICJ where we ask for a clarification on the 1859 Borders and Boundaries Treaty, which shows all international borders from Rio Hondo to Sars 2. From poor Rio Hondo to all Sars 2, well, you should say from poor Rio Hondo to no Sars 2. I mean, if you want to look at it from that now, because, I mean, if I go to Sars 2, I'm persona non grata. I can't, you know, I guarantee they would, I would have to fight my way through, just, you know, but that's the reality. So we can ask, there are other mechanisms that we can do. If we seek an advisory opinion to, to form this UN Security Council to ICJ, at least, at the very least, they could come back and say, "Well, you know, you don't have anything to lose by." But as long as the status quo remain in as it is in the Sars 2, as to say Guatemala has effective control of the area, we run a very high probability that if this eventually goes to the ICJ, that we will more than likely lose some territory. And that's the reality. Now, let me just wrap up because, you know, I mean, I, I know you guys wanted to get to the mic and ask some questions. I got my five minutes warning. Let me just say this. The focal point at this, at this juncture should be on the Sars 2 and what is occurring down there. Notice Guatemala doesn't want to talk about that. They keep saying, "This should be referred to the ICJ." Fine. They keep saying this should be referred to the I C J, fine. But in the interim, it's gonna take, what, how long do we know? Maybe five to eight years before you even get to the I C J. Then after another five years for a judgment, what's gonna happen in the interim? If we just, if we just disregard that reality about the SARS II? Hey, that's part of our national anthem. Could you imagine if the United States give up, um, under rocket red glare? Delete that line? Oh my God, they'll be like, "Simulair!" I mean, so could you, that's what we're gonna have to do. Port Rio Hondo to no SARS II, that's what it's gonna bring them to. And your national anthem is a part of you. It's, it's a part of your culture, defines who you are. You can't tell no American about their, you know, I'm a, I'm a naturalized American citizen. I can tell you, my American friends who are here, you try to tell them about their national anthem, you, 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 you might looking for a fight. So, if you're telling Belize now to, to give up the SARS II, "Don't worry about it", that's the attitude, right, Morgan? Give it up, "I don't worry about it." It's just still, like, what, I even had official people telling me, "Why worry about the mosquito donkey," all that kind of thing. You're more than, I mean, here we are, this is the mindset that you're dealing with. People telling you to, "Don't worry about it." This line in your national anthem that says, "All SARS II, don't worry about it." Because it's, it's just a territory, we can give up Guatemala, it should be fine. Well, I am here to tell you that I don't know, I'm not from a school of thought. Like when your friends would say, "No one, or, no one, there that cross." You know what I mean? This is how, this should be your mindset. Eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square mile, that's what I was in school, that's what they told us, and that's what I'm sticking to. Live or die. Eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square mile, no more, no less. And I'm not from Guatemala, uno esté o le fine, but give me my eight, eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven and that's the bottom line. That's where I'm at. I don't know, but that's where I'm at.